Oh, thank you. Welcome to our October fifteenth City of Newport Bay Council meeting. Before we start, I'd like to give a letter of designation from Valerie Swoburn. She says, "I am resigning my city council decision number five to date immediately. As several of you know, my husband has been going through some serious health challenges this year, and I want to be here at home to help him. I'm not sure what our future is lined up. I wish all the best in your endeavors to make Dico Bay successful." Kim, would you please call a roll? Yes. Councilor Mestel?
Here.
Councilor Watson?
Here.
Councilor Wright?
Here.
Councilor King?
Here.
Mayor Shor?
Here.
And Councilor Beasley?
Here.
Thank you. I do want to have a change to the agenda. I'd like to put number seven under new business. We have a council meeting on November fifth, and I would like to change that one to change it to the April twelfth, so we'll discuss that under item number seven. Does anyone have a chance to look at the consent agenda? Is your motion to accept as presented?
So, no.
It's been moved to second to accept the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I just have a question, please. Under minutes, page ninety-four, it's referencing the Chamber of Commerce letter. Someone suggested send a letter to their board members. I don't know who that was, who they are, to get a status of what's going on with them. I'm counting that we had any...
Oh, I sent, I, according to the minutes from what I remember, I didn't know who the board was. So I could only send any kind of communications to the executive director. And so I did, but at that point...
Okay, thank you.
Where was that located?
Page nine.
Yes, councilor? It was number four.
Mayor, I just had a question about the council's payable. And I know there's somebody here who can comment on or explain it to me, but we had, by my count, about a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars go out to AKS Engineering Works Group for a variety of projects, including one called Bay Street Sidewalk Improvement Capital Improvement, which is twenty-six thousand dollars. Can you explain to me what, just give me kind of an overview of this? Why, I don't ever recall seeing this many invoices from AKS. Were we catching up? Or were we doing...
No, these are just all the projects that were denied. Like, for example, the Bay Street Sidewalk Improvement was a project that's been in the budget and scheduled, but we couldn't do it until this fall. It was one of those where we received a small city allowance grant. So about two hundred and fifty-six thousand of it will come back to us once we close out the grant. The Trail Timber Bridge is a project we have going on, the Commerce Street Waterline replacement, he's kind of talked about. The In Pound PLA is finishing up that property sale agreement. Plan Review is all the plan review he knows for D O for stuff like that for the planning. And then there is a couple of things on here for the actual, using Zach Phelps, who did our in-room planning for us, a couple of them on there, but most of these are projects that are underway.
Did you just have from last meeting, the list of projects?
I believe so.
Yes, so those are all covered in this list, and I can get you that list if you need it. That would be helpful.
No, I've got that list, but thank you. It's obvious that the administrators are good at touch with this.
You know, what he does, and I know it makes it very burdensome, it just makes it burdensome when I get all these invoices, is they, instead of billing like a mass, like other places will bill everything en masse, he does it by task force. So that way I can keep track of what he's spending on each task force and make sure we don't cover it. And he's staying within what we budgeted.
So, Madam Mayor, just an additional comment.
Yes.
My number came closer to a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. And we've talked about this in Banjart back and forth, and I would just like to encourage the council and the future council, when it gets to be budget season, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars as a full-time employee. And that's just one month worth of them, so I just think we need to consider that. And then a question, what is Civic Plus, if you could remind me?
Oh, that's our website.
Okay.
I also would like to point out, so you told that last, that he's a bill from Advanced American that he never done. Just so you know, that early dollar grant that we got through the harbor funds is gone. We have expended it. We spent it well within the deadline, so we're completely compliant and real happy that he spent itself. One grant down.
When did it go?
June.
Oh, to the spooky calendar. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Is our sheriff here? Do you think...
No, he's going to give us a report next time. There was some delay. They have some staff changes. So like Nick is working nice now, but I did want to know, he is, last week and this week, he's doing the training. We met the gentleman today, his name is Matt. So he's learning about Dico Bay and he's being trained. So we did have a backup deputy in here last week, his name was Tony Ortiz, and he filled in for Casey when Casey wasn't here. Casey's here this week. He's just going a lot of different places, but yeah.
I'm sorry, so what's the change? Are we doing any different sheriffs now?
No, Casey's our deputy. Nick used to work days. He's our sergeant liaison, but now he's working nights. So Casey's doing training, but last week, because he was doing the training and he wasn't in the city, they gave us a replacement. Tony Ortiz was our backup, our replacement. So the sheriff member, when he was at the one meeting, he committed that, he committed to saying that if they take Casey out, you know, for this type of thing, they would make sure that we have someone in some of Dico Bay. And he did. The gentleman was there for it, so.
Thank you. Okay, well, look at that. Next one. Any reports? Is emergency prepared?
Yeah, we don't have a whole lot to report. We have not yet since we had our last meeting. We had one meet this last Monday, but two of our members were not able to come. So we just postpone our next meeting to the twenty-eighth.
Okay, thank you. Harper? Jack, did you have Harper? Oh, Pat, are you doing Harper? Who's on that?
I, yeah, we had an emergency meeting. I think Jack's going to cover that later.
Okay, already.
Landy did his first monthly plan report. That is included in the packet. So if you have, he's not online right now, but if there's anything that I need your, you know, that I know about.
Madam Mayor, can I ask the staff a question about planning?
Yes.
At the last, wasn't the last meeting, it was the meeting before, when Planning was telling us about Dico Bay rentals, there was some discussion about the number of vacation rentals. The planning representative thought it was thirty percent. I believe Fran and I thought it was fifteen percent, and the staff was going to try to find the documents associated with really, what is the vacation rental rate up there? How many vacation rentals do we have up there? And are we above or below what the agreed percentage?
I will have Landy dig that out, because he's some, he's been involved in.
Okay. And Scott, I want to apologize. I forgot you're on planning. Do you have anything to refer to this?
I was hoping you wouldn't remember. It's thirty units, not thirty percent.
It was...
Because all the other phases don't have any.
So that's, that's more in line with what I thought, but that wasn't the comment that was made, and it was fifteen percent of the total difference in number one, in phase one.
There's only one phase that has... Yeah, that's correct. Total. Right, well, the total of all phases, they're just all having to be in phase one or two, phase two.
So, and it was four hundred homes, and so...
There's about four hundred and fifty going in, and thirty of them are vacation rentals.
So that would be fifty-five vacation rentals would be allowed.
You have rentals going in on thirty.
Yeah, so anyway, those are the numbers we wanted to check, just to make sure that they are...
I mean, it's the last approval numbers.
But they're all going in on the next phase, so.
Well, he sat here and told us that we're not in the, in the phase two.
But there's something else.
The developer sat here and told us that.
Phase two?
In this, the one we just approved. He said there were...
Well, you only, you didn't approve phase two yet, you approved the zone change for part of it.
For the second duty.
Right, but phase two, I don't think has been presented yet.
But they told us there would be those vacation rentals in the second phase.
Well, I'll have to check with him on that, but I didn't think phase two had been presented.
Anyway, it's just a number that we said we were going to dig up, and I hadn't seen it, so I just thought I would remind you.
Thank you.
Anybody from Parks? Is anything from Parks? And Salmon? I don't see any Salmon. Okay, I'll open the floor for public comments. No, I'm just asking if you want to ask anything. Yeah, and any public comments online? Let's see, okay, okay, so. Under unfinished business, we have the business license update. Thank you, Bill, for working on this. This is, it had to be very, very good. It is an ordinance, and it is a ordinance number three five zero dash twenty-four. An ordinance providing for the licensing of businesses professionals, trades and occupations, providing a penalty for violation thereof, and refueling ordinance number two four three and three three nine dash twenty-three, declaring an emergency. So at this time, I'll take a motion to read the ordinance by title only. I'll make a motion to read the ordinance by title only. I'm sorry, it's been moved to second to read the ordinance three five zero dash twenty-four by title. Is there any discussion on the motion?
This is just a motion to read by, by title.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So I'll open the floor for discussion on the ordinance and the business licensing update. Do we need to use this? Pardon?
Oh, wait, Madam Chair.
Okay, do we need to read it then by title? I just, that was enough.
Yeah, okay. Well, we'll change the process, because you read it by title, then you get the motion, so you technically should read it by title. So you're coming to a motion to go forward. But the council is agreeable and acceptable, then.
What change about the next?
The only thing I wanted to point out in this particular thing, I made the changes that Council Mel and someone just suggested. They were just clarifications, plus some things regarding dates. I have the wrong date. But the big one is on page thirty-three of one hundred and three. Section eleven was the distribution of license fee revenue. I had put a proposed idea in there based on something I'd seen before, whether or not the council chooses, which is to do that, it's probably up to you.
May I have a...
Yes.
Yeah. So I'll address that section eleven in a second, but I, just as an idea, I just looked at what the City of Newport charges. And they charge an application fee of forty-two dollars and a standard fee, general fee of a hundred and thirty-eight dollars. I don't see an application fee in here.
That's correct, and I did, I pulled the draft resolution, because I wasn't sure what you guys were going to come up with, but there is an application fee on the draft resolution. A thirty-dollar application fee is what I believe there, plus the hundred dollar for the business license, so.
Yeah, so I don't...
I haven't presented that yet for discussion. I kind of wanted to get a feel for how the ordinance was going to go tonight. The ordinance does not actually put any fees in it, so that's up for discussion later.
Well, it has fees in it, right?
I don't believe the ordinance has any fees in it.
Page twenty-five is just the memo, Fran, regarding the fees.
So when do the fees...
I wanted to present the fees to you at the next meeting, once I saw how the ordinance itself went. There's no point in adopting a resolution of fees if we don't have an ordinance.
Okay, well, I would suggest that we're on par with the City of Newport's application fee and general fee.
How much was their application fee again?
Forty-two and a hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the general fee. We now have it as a hundred. And then they have, you know, short-term handles and stuff that we'll deal with at a different meeting, I guess.
Yes.
Okay, so, but that's an interesting ordinance there, too. And you might want to look at that. And in terms of the dedication, I'm not really in favor of dedicating, specifying dedication to funds for every...
Oh, I'm sorry, dedication. I'm sorry, I was lost. I was like, what dedication? Yeah, that is just something I've seen in other cities' ordinance, and I didn't know if we had any.
The only thing I, first of all, tourism, we do already have an allocation of seventy-thirty, so I don't think we need that. But I'm not sure we need to dedicate anything from this, but if we do, one of the things I'd like to look at instead of this would be like a code enforcement officer for these license fees. You know, because it's taking, it was Diane, but it's taking staff time, I guess that's Jenny now. And we'll think, and it's taking a lot of time, so maybe, if anything, instead of having a planner or something do it, we could have this dedicated to some sort of, but I'm not sure we need any distribution.
Yeah, you don't actually need any distribution right now. I think those are in the general fund, and unless she wishes otherwise, that's for those to be used within the general fund.
I'm feeling kind of the same way. I don't think we need to distribute the funds like this. So we can just take that out, just to make that a people's thing.
Well, I don't think so. I just, it sounds to be easier.
So all it does is remove section eleven and renumber it?
Okay.
That's not considered a massive change, though. But does it need, sorry, does it need to provide for setting the fees and application fees and fees?
Not in the ordinance. You don't want to do that in the ordinance in case you want to change it on a regular basis, which I want to give as pro-mass-fee schedule, so that once a year, the council would use the entire fee schedule of the city in docks one and one suite. So that's why I didn't present the rates within the body of the ordinance.
But it doesn't, I don't...
You said, the language in the ordinance is that the council sets the rates by resolution. So you guys...
The rate for the fee, but also rate for application?
Yeah, everything, yeah, everything. It'll be covered on everything, so I will make sure to include that. I mean, what I put in there was basic, so, for example, the outfitter guide, what was, that's what is being recommended by the Harbor Commission. So that five hundred in there has been recommended by the Harbor Commission. Other ones, I just did a deep dive and a bunch of scene, what other cities did, trying to look at the size of the city, trying to look at ours, that sort of thing. But the rates ultimately are, is the council's decision.
And that would come in the resolution, kind of?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, on the outfitter guide fee, does that include all operators? Would that include, for example, charter boats, or is that just aimed at the six-packs?
The six-packs. And it's the five hundred for, I think, if the six-pack license essentially, plus they would have to pay the hundred dollars for the boat launch fee, I think, in the annual.
You know, I heard Councilor Wright talk about being okay with this on par with the City of Newport. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, though, but don't they charge a, I think they call it a charter fee in Newport, right?
They probably do. We have...
So that would apply to, and that applies to all vessels, so if you were going to do an outfitter guide. See, I just feel, I don't understand why we would target those boats.
Pardon me, Councilor Farnady? I'm sorry. So the outfitter guide services are a bit different. They don't, they don't have moored space. They don't have a reserved spot. They launch the boat launch. We're trying to capture the fact that they use our fishing, our garbings. We're trying to catch the fact that they use our facility and our boat, basically, the carcasses. But they don't have the same benefits as our moored hauler, so because they don't launch from a dock. So that's kind of one of the differences in that. So it would be hard to charge these guys what we charge a moored hauler, because they don't have the same benefits, but...
Okay, I can, I can see that argument, you know, actually, that the impacts of this business fee. And we see tremendous impacts in this business. And I, as you look at it, there are more impacts than you think that are going on, and I can see doing that. I also think, and I don't know that I satisfied with the answers I've got so far, but are we on par with Newport? Since we're talking about on par with Newport, in terms of our mortgage fees?
We just raise mortgage fees, but...
I know that we raise mortgage fees every year, but we are so far behind everybody else that just raising a few percentage points doesn't put us in an advantageous position. That's just something that I consider in this, is if we want to be, and I think it would be good to be on par with Newport, because we have all the advantages Newport has, and more. We're a much better port than Newport, as far as I'm concerned, because there are, you're just minutes from the fishing, minutes from the whale watching, as opposed to having to transit miles out of Newport. We have so many advantages.
Would that be, excuse me, would that be something that we would ask our Harbor Commission to investigate, to see if we're on par, especially since we're going to have a harbor next?
I am so glad to hear you suggest that, Mayor. That would, that would put an end to that question in mind. Yeah, I'd like to see the Harbor Commission do that.
Okay.
And I think that would make things really fair, Mayor, if we're going to be doing this outfitter guide deal.
So if I understand correctly, you want the Harbor Commission to revisit the rates they just adopted and make them on par with Newport?
Similar, yeah, and going into the banjart season, that would be very optimal.
I think that's, I think you put it very well.
But I just want to make sure that it's very specific that they are supposed to do this based on Newport. Because we did a lot of research to get to the rates we were at with Councilor Wright, even coming up with the percentage points. So there was a lot of research on that. There was a lot of work put into this. I mean, if the council wishes the Harbor Commission to look at the rates again and make a match Newport, we can do that. But I think that's going to be pretty high.
Not to start until next year, I mean, in twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six. Just something to research for us, to see.
Okay.
And if I can just point out that on the minutes that we just approved from July second, there was a Harbor Commission line item that said that a discussion followed between Bureit and the council about annual mortgage rates. And the city administrator, Waldenberg, said that what was being discussed would actually require a change in the city ordinance about annual mortgage rates. She said that the commission will need to make recommendations to the council to get the mortgage changed. And so there was discussion back in July specifically about mortgage rates in the meeting minutes, and that the Harbor Commission was going to come back with the recommendation of, of what they want to change. And it looks like they're doing the first part of it, which is the guide boat piece, which is the five hundred dollars. And I'm just not sure if it was clear that we wanted them to look at the other component as well.
It absolutely was not clear that we wanted, you guys wanted them to revisit the entire mortgage rate structure again, when they just adopted it.
I was going to say, didn't they just do that?
They did.
Yeah.
They just adopted it. I don't remember the exact date, maybe our chair to, our chair to the Harbor Commission, but that just happened this summer for the mortgage season.
But that's before we have the new docks, so I've heard of this.
Right, but if I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I'm saying we knew we were getting the new docks. We did this discussion, and we went through all of this discussion of rates for months, and we knew we were getting new docks. So the fact that we're getting new docks isn't anything new. We knew we were getting them, and that was all factored in there. I'm just trying to understand, because I'm not to go back to Harbor Commission and say, the council, despite the patch of debt, just raised rates six months ago, they want to redo the business again.
Well, I remember a chart with all the different ports and stuff. Maybe we should review that, since we're not doing a fee now.
Okay.
And take a look at whether or not we do want to look at the mortgage.
You mean, we're going to the next meeting, that chart?
Maybe we could just review that chart. Is that okay?
Absolutely, yeah. I just, what I asked several months ago was, as we were getting into this revenue process, was if we did everything we could in the harbor to bring rates on par with other ports, to charge things like the outfitter guide charter fee like other ports, if we could make sure that crab storage was paid on our docks, like other ports. If we did all these things, could we erase the deficit in the harbor? That was my question. And I think, I think we can go a long ways to doing that, if we, you know, we let Councilor Wright suggest, you know, be on par with Newport.
My direction from the work session that we had in August was to focus on the charter head tax, not the entire rate structure.
Sure.
So I haven't given any thought to go on. I have worked on charter rates, though. But that was the direction, not the mortgage rates.
So I think that would be more, more revenue generating.
Right.
And in understanding the deficit of the harbor, we still don't have a full understanding of how much the harbor costs us to run. Oh, thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Yes.
I have just one other question, actually, two other questions. One is on the transient business license. Is that seventy-five dollars per unit, or is it for, for a business license?
The transient business license is not for their short-term rentals. I do have a, what I think is a very lovely new ordinance that I'm only bringing for that customers have already helped use it. But the transient is basically, they don't have all this material there.
Right, okay. That answers my question. The other thing, another thing is, is that the language on this ordinance states that any person engaging in any business within the limits of the city is subject to the licensing requirement, less exempted. Is that the... That sounds like any person, every person that's in business would have to have a business license. Should we say any business engaging in commercial activity within the city, and that would cover their employees, right?
Well, if you, if you license a business and they have employees, yes, it would cover their employees. But if I wanted to run a business within Dico Bay, as me myself, I should get a license. So if we just say any business operator, I could be a sole proprietor. I'm not necessarily a business owner, sole proprietor. So if you're conducting business of any sort within the city, you should have a license.
By the way, you have to be a registered business to be a sole proprietor. I mean, you wouldn't be a business. You wouldn't be a person.
A sole proprietor, right, but that means that I'm doing this for myself, working for myself, so.
So Rick, if I can clarify, I think that the clause you're talking about specifically says that any person that's engaging in business should be a licensed individual, but then down under the, unless exempted. And then if you look at exemption B, under section four, exemption B says individuals who work only on the premises of and as part of a licensed business, those people are exempted. So you're exempting the employees, but not the business.
So what if you're a landscaper?
The landscape business would have to be licensed, but the individual landscaper who works for the licensed business would not.
Okay.
All right, thank you. That answers my question.
The only exception would be if they're a ten, na, na.
Correct.
So that means they're working for themselves.
Correct.
Right. And, you know, people, landscape companies do that. All companies sell contracts, so.
Is there any other discussion on the motion?
So you don't actually have a motion in place right now?
Oh, wow, okay.
Can you do a second? You would have to go through the process, which means motion to do a second, reading by title only. Once that, then you read by title only, then you would motion to adopt.
It's a process that you have to go through.
One additional clarification, and I think it's important. I asked why everything, why we did it by emergency, and I think then you could probably give a... But it's basically the better up against the timeline for business licensing and chain delivery.
Mayor, if I could ask one other thing, because I know I'm going to get asked about it, and it's the three hundred dollar food service license. Is that similar to what we already got, or is that a new fee?
Well, the license fee right now is generally eighty-two fifty for one employee, depending on how many employees you have with it. Basically, the license is the application fee plus one employee, so it's about eighty-two fifty a year. But if you only, if you, it depends, and then you, depending on how many employees you have. We have nobody to verify. People have given us accurate numbers of employees. So a food service, they say they don't have any employees, maybe they do, so it's hard to set... So a food service, they say they don't have any employees, maybe they do, so it's hard to set. But this is definitely a new rate. I know that was real rambling, I apologize, but right now, a business, they say they only have one employee and it'd be the rate, the age, because if they have more than one, goes up to 117.50, I think.
But, but we're not.
We're not talking about rates.
We're not talking about rates right now. Now, this was just a sample, this wasn't designed to be, I should have probably pulled that out when I did the resolution. Sorry, money, water. Did help hearing from Councillor Rex about the Newport rates.
So we're, we're, we're gonna go from 82.50 to $300 a year?
Well, it's 82.50 only if they have one employee. They have two, more goes up.
Okay, so you have some, you mentioned the maximum.
I don't remember.
Did you just mention the maximum?
No, I don't remember what the maximum is. It's four ranges, I think.
If you've got 10 people, would that be a $300 license?
It probably gets pretty close to it, but I can give you guys a rate the last time.
Okay.
I'll bring the current rates and all that information so you'll have it available for the resolution in the next session. So I would move that we adopt ordinance number 35024, the second by second reading, and permitting section 11 from the ordinance.
So your motion is to go for it with the second reading by title?
By title.
With that, with, we'll do that and we'll adopt.
Okay.
A second.
So we moved to second to adopt the ordinance as to read, read by second.
Right, read by title.
Only, okay. Any discussion on the motion? Do you men, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, yes. Okay.
Now, can you do a motion to adopt, reviving section 11?
Okay. So a motion to adopt ordinance number 350-24, 350.50. Reviving section 11. Moving section 11.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
We moved to second to adopt ordinance 350-24 is presented. Any discussion on the motion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any votes?
Okay.
Now what?
Okay, now we make the change and then we'll adopt and we'll review the TSC for next time.
Okay.
But at least we can get across this and start getting the forms updated and stuff like that. Especially since today was my last day, so. But this next item, the procurement thresholds, was a bit on my, oh, my part, I think I explained it in there. I was thinking, when it, we had something come up and I was like, oh, during the charter reads, I couldn't actually approve these things. Everything would go through very, and I don't think it was meant to happen. So this just adds me along with Brady as these levels here.
So are you in touch with us for review this?
So it's just basically a...
And your motion is to move the administrative corrections to exhibit B.
All along with that motion, I want to approve the administrative correction to exhibit B, procurement thresholds are presented. Is there a second?
Second.
So we moved to second to approve the administrative corrections to exhibit B, procurement thresholds are presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. All ready. Okay. Mr. O'Brien, would you like to come up and, what would be, would you come up and put the trap?
I'd like to.
Oh, would you?
Yes, I would be.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Mara, members. Address first, but we did have a meeting last week to further refine our recommendations and also to discuss some of the Councilman Rex attended the meeting and brought up. We tried to address some of the issues she had previously brought up, was unable to respond as far as use of other storage areas other than ones we had selected. I don't know. Well, with faded aqua, because of shallow water, it's not really possible. The fish plant, here, could accommodate roughly about 145 crab pots. The fish plant here is mildly rectangular, starts out at 11 feet wide and then turns out to be 8 foot wide. And I just did a rough calculation on the number of pots and came up with around 145. Keeping the safety area with a 50-foot arm, so it may be 20 foot. The area around the arm. The barge was mentioned last week, or barge. And the, that would take up slip space. So we lose a couple, at least a couple of slips. And if you use a barge, but barge would be basically there all the time. Unlike a, on the boats, the dock would be coming out and coming back in. Even though it's tide, it could well be considered an overwater, a probable, an increased overwater coverage in the harbor. And the feeling is that that, and if that happens, then it could cost either the city or the boat owners boat captain, boat owners' money or something to mitigate the extra coverage. You know, we're paying extra already because of the increase in the size of dock trip, the width and length of dock trip. And that, that's already been determined and approved and permitted. But under the covered permit, that's all that would be done. So we would have to go in and do a re-permit and everything if we were to see if a barge destroyed a pot would be feasible. Anyhow, having said that, I made an error in the way of the crab pot. I reweighed it, came up with 35 pounds of pot instead of the 30 pounds. I asked the city to have PND Engineering recalculate the number of pots for float session based on the revised weight. PND's recalculation allows 25 pots maximum per float unit or 60 per dock. However, they still say 20 pots are better than 25 or 30 pots. The harbor commission has amended its crab pot proposal as follows. And these requirements would be incorporated in the harbor regulations. The number of pots per vessel is determined by Morse classification. Class A vessels, 25 and under 4 pots. Class B vessel, 26 to 34 foot, 6 pots. Class C vessels, 35 to 52 feet, 10 pots. Now, not all vessels of the 35, 35 to 52 foot category can accommodate or will want to store 10 pots. And nor will all board vessels in the harbor want to, of any way, want to store crab pots on dock. As recommended by PND Engineering, crab pots will be stored on the three westernmost dock sections of Dock 2 and 3. And the two most, excuse me, westernmost dock sections of Dock 4. Dock 4 has only four dock sections. So reducing the number of pots or sections available to store on Dock 4. Crab pot storage must not interfere with the safety zones around fire suppression equipment on each dock. Crab pots may not be stored on the finger docks. No item of any kind may be stored on top of the crab pots. The harbor master will check compliance with these requirements on a daily basis, and any boat owner not adhering to compliance will receive one warning letter from the city. Any further non-compliance will result in the boat owner's loss of privileges to store crab pots on dock. No other items such as dollings, coolers, retainers of any size may be stored on the dock. All ramps and steps must be stored on the owner's boat when not in use. And when the boat is away from the dock, ramps and/or steps may be stored on the dock midline in the westernmost three docks, on docks 1, 2, 3, and the two westernmost dock sections of Dock 4. And must not interfere with fire safety zones around fire suppression equipment. Recreation of boat owners will store their pots on their boat. When their boats are away from the dock and are not crabbing, the pots may be stored on the last three sections of Dock 1, 2, 3, and two sections of Dock 4, for the duration of their ocean trip. Boat owners must provide and maintain protective deck covering under the pot stack using one of the two PND Engineering recommendations stated in PND's email to the city dated September 18, 2024. The most cost-effective method, pallet rack wire decking, is available at home people. I think in your package you have a thing from Fran, and what she shows there is the cost-effective method that PND Engineering suggested. The harbor commission's amended recommendation is the city council will allow crab pot storage in Dock 1, 2, 4 under limitations and conditions that are proposed by the commission and PND Engineering provides JFV. We further recommend city council approve this for a two-year period beginning with the city's acceptance of the new docks on or on April 30th, 2025, and ending on October 31st, 2027. If at the end of the trial period, the requirements and limitations imposed by the harbor commission and PND Engineering, as included in the harbor regulation, continue to be met, crab pot storage on the docks will continue as the city policy. I do think that we've given the council sufficient information to make a decision on this issue, and we request that the council do so. I'm prepared to answer any questions or respond to any comments that council members may have this evening.
Okay, I'll open the floor for questions. Yes.
So I don't know where these numbers came from, Kim, I've just been looking at them now, but they're the numbers that have, the current number of crab pots at the start of the season was 398 crab pots.
Yeah, those, yeah.
Those came from our harbor master, he walked the docks.
Okay, and so we're proposing, or you are proposing now that you're gonna give up 98 of those crab pots to go to the 300, that is the loud number that PND would allow.
There'd be at least that, yeah, and this was, that was written as a worst-case scenario. Not as what, that was the way it was presented to Harvard.
It says current numbers as of early in the 2024 season. Like listed votes and the number of crab pots that were out there, yeah. Okay.
Question, either for Brady or Kim, are we pretty confident that harbor master would have time to do this on a daily basis to go and supervise and make sure that the that the crab pots are, are for the areas, not better for things that we don't want them to come in here?
I mean, it'll be, the summer will be really busy. We should get extra help in the summer for the harbor master, so we could, you know.
He's supposed to be walking the docks in the morning, and he's been reminded that that is one of the primary things he's supposed to do. It, it did get a more challenging because we had, we had some staff changes and then he was, but out for a while during the busy season. So it does make more challenging if you don't have a support down there, but he is supposed to.
Yeah. Yes. So I heard Chad last meeting said that for commercial boats, they could put the crab pots on the boats after the whale watch boat, crab pots and stairs on the boat after the whale watch boats come in.
Right, but while, when the whale watch, you know, they could store them on the boats. But then during the whale washing cruises, they had to store them on the centerline on the dock. So there will be crab pots on the dock at some point, regardless of what what the city council decides on what to accept. But yes, it's possible, there still will be crab pots stored on the dock when the charter boats come back from the fishing trip, offload the crab pots, take off the boat, take people out for their whale washing, come back, and then the pots can go back on the boat.
Um, and then what about this possibility of having 578 crab pots if all the people who are eligible to have crab pots take advantage of this provision?
I believe that, again, like I said earlier, this was stated, brought to our attention as a worst-case, worst-case scenario. I don't, I've never counted more than 390 pots maybe go on the dock. And I don't believe that we're gonna see 581. But we can accommodate that number of pots based on the PND recommendation of where the pots should be stored in the dock.
So that means that any new businesses coming in doesn't have the same opportunity as the existing businesses?
Not necessarily, not necessarily. Because again, they store them on the boats and then just take them off for whale washing and then put them back on the boats. If that's the option that is chosen, then they would have the same opportunity to do it.
So it seems, one more question then, so it seems like the full limit would be 300 under PND. So there seems, if there's a demand, there needs to be some sort of lottery system if it gets beyond 300.
I don't think it were, I, it would not be 300 under PND recommendation. You can get 60 per dock. And so once you've got that, it's 240. On Dock 4, you can only get, you can only use the last two docks, so that would be 40 more. So that'd be maximum 280 by the company.
But that doesn't change my, so when it becomes 280, if there's more demand, if no whale watching charter boats come in and want to have the same opportunity by class as the other two on Dock 1, 2, and 3, somehow the city's gonna have to come up with a way to be equitable to all businesses. So that might mean a, some sort of lottery system in the future of who is eligible for that.
Quite honestly, I cannot address that because we didn't go off into the future with that particular scenario. I think that should that occur, situation occur, then the harbor commission and the city council can re-investigate the issue. But I think for now, that is not a viable situation, I think.
Yes, council?
Thank you.
Oh, did you have something outside of you?
No, okay, you can go first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, this is a, it almost makes your head hurt to think about how we're trying to make this happen here. What I am amazed at is how these businesses are able to make this wonderful living out there. And they're very flexible, I mean, they're into whale watching, they're into deep sea fishing, they're into salmon fishing and crabbing. And it's, it's a difficult act to pull off, and I want the city to be as helpful as possible to make this happen. My concern from the very beginning, Jack, was that, or Mara, I should say, was that we asked PND, we asked the engineers, first, can we store pots on this and do it safely without damage to the docks? And apparently, the... And apparently, the answer has come back that we should, that we can. And I would like to make that storage of those, see that storage of pots be as easy and convenient as possible for this, this business that is kind of thriving down in our harbor right now, that very, you know, it's very difficult to do. So we should be making it easy for them if we can. Now, we know that we can get that many pots on, my only hesitation right now on this is that I think we should be starting, we should be charging for storage, that if people are going to use the docks for storage, we should charge for them, just like Newport does. And I'm still not convinced that we've looked at every possible method of storing these. Maybe it's just that I don't understand well enough the difficulty of switching around from whale watching to crabbing. But would it do any good to have any land-based storage, or does it have to be on the docks, do we have any use to these pots?
If, if you do land-based storage, then you're going to transport the, the boat owners, they'd have to transport the crab pots in a truck or trailer, whatever, to this land-based storage. And then, when they're going out in the morning, or in the, in the evening, now remember, they get up three, four o'clock in the morning, you know, and they work till maybe two or three in the afternoon sometimes. And sometimes later, if they're going out on a tuna, tuna trip. So they don't have a lot of, a lot of windows to work with, and then if you do that, then you're going to have trucks coming down with the crab pots, stopping at a gangway, offloading the pots onto the boat. And everybody's been down to the harbor, and one truck stopped to do this, regardless of the number of pots, then no traffic goes around in the parking area. And so then, once moves off, one moves off, now, if you stagger it so that the people on dock four go in first, and then the three, and then the two, then the one, I don't want to be coordinating that, I don't want to do that. So, I mean, that, that would be a, a, is it feasible? It's, it's, it can be done, yes, but is it feasible for a business? I, I don't think so, in my opinion, and I am, I don't own a boat, I have no vested interest, I have no money invested in the harbor. But just looking at it from a base, let's say, yes, it can be done, but is it practical? And I believe the answer is no.
So, so can you make this work, I mean, if, if, from what I heard you say is that they were going to be constantly moving these crab pots off the dock and back onto the boat, when the boat's not in use, or when it's being used for crabbing and not, they wouldn't be storing these on the, or we wouldn't be storing?
One option is, one of the options to consider, is if the charter boats store all the pots on the boat, except when they're whale washing, then the only time the crab pots would be on the dock would be when the boat is out whale washing. And the requirements, P and D requirements would still have to be met. And then crab pots on the dock for, let's just say, for like, an afternoon, okay? Let's say one to four. And then, when they come back in, crab pots would then, under that scenario, go back on their boats. And then in the morning, when they come in to do their fishing and combo trips, they go out now. If they're not doing a combo trip, they can carry, well, I don't know, you'd have to talk to the businesses, but I, I don't know how many pots you want for the day, or what you're doing with fishing, the line fishing.
But they can store their pots there when they're not, I'm, you know, Mayor, I just think it would be good if they can store their pots on the, on those docks. The engineers say that they're good for, what, two hundred and eighty pots? But I would like to see us get a fee, a user fee.
Phil, add a comment as well.
Yeah, so I, I would be fine with, with, with what's proposed. But I do think there needs to be a fee, I mean, they're using, they're using city property, and so there should be some kind of a fee charge for the square footage, or whatever, whatever we ultimately come up with on the resolution to do that. But my concern is, when you look at docks three, for example, P and D says there's only going to be ninety crab pots on that dock. And currently, if everybody maxed out, there's two hundred and thirty-six. Somehow, the city is going to need to get into the battle of, how do we decide of the two hundred and thirty-six crab pots that need to or want to store there, only nine are going to be allowed? And what's the process going to be for the city to do that? Because it's going to have to be a fair and equitable process to, to kind of echo what Fran was saying. I mean, there's fourteen category C boats out there, that's a hundred and forty crab pots that need to take the space of ninety, ninety pots that P and D's going to allow. And so, the city's going to have to get into some kind of a battle with the, the captains to say, well, you know what, you don't get them. And you get to go on a waitlist, or whatever that process is, I think we need to know what that is so that we're not just saying, sure, go ahead and do it, and then let's figure it out later. I don't, I don't think figuring it out later is going to work.
Or, and they can put the crab pots in the back of their deuce and a half, and then, you know, double them down the boat. I mean, there's, there's ways around.
So of the fourteen, of the fourteen category C boats, which ones are going to deuce them around?
I don't know.
That's the, that's the problem.
And the owners of docks like Charter's have written several letters and spoken to us several times about how I would have to pull out a fee for them, so I don't think we're going to, I don't think that's an option.
Yeah, as you say, there are fourteen, there would be fourteen, there are fourteen spots that would be in the Class C category, but again, not all boats which would be in those lists are charter boats that would want to carry.
So that's, I mean, that's the way it is today, they're not all charter boats, tomorrow they could be. There's nothing to say that a category C boat can't, can or cannot be a charter out of dock three, so.
No, no, I don't.
I, I'm just concerned that we've got a far greater need than we have a capacity, and we need to figure out how we're going to double it out. I, I'm okay with three hundred crab pots, and P and D is okay with three hundred crab pots.
Two eighty.
Or two eighty, whatever the number is. P and D's okay with that number, and I'm okay with that number, as long as it's, the city's getting a fee, and that there's an equitable way to distribute those two hundred and eighty to every captain out there that wants them.
You know, Mayor, there is also another way, I, I could be completely wrong about this, that we're not talking, we're talking about, like, we are limited to this, these docks here, and we can't use the deuce and a half, it's all impractical. But what we could do is create more dock space. We have, we've used, we've had more dock space in the city before, along the north side of the harbor. I don't know what it would take, but I think the Harbor Commission ought to look at that.
So, there isn't any more dock space because we can't, there's no mitigation?
There's no what?
No mitigation available over water cabbage. So unless we use the fish plant, which is available, and again, we rent our city property, or the Fader Dock, we could rent that, or the barge, I mean.
I'm sorry, did Mofino pull out?
What's that?
Did Mofino pull out?
No, no, but we haven't renewed leases, and not all that dock space is used. So, so right now, there's more crab, there's three hundred and ninety-eight crab pots that are counted in use at the beginning of the season. You can all, so right away, we have to get rid of, you know, a hundred and nineteen, whatever that is, crab pots. So, there's already going to be a reduction, and this, the idea of this barge is a boat, it's a boat with a flat top on it. It, it shows how valuable storage space is, right? So a twenty-seven hundred dollar mortgage fee is what might have to be done. You know, and I'm still concerned about the liability, and I saw the insurance agents, we can work that out if we go forward with this. But there's still liability, and these are public docks, and we're spending four point three million dollars on these docks. And it wasn't designed for crab pot storage, P and D after the fact said yes. So, you know, the more that we can minimize the amount of time and pots that are on the dock that we allow them, I mean, I, I think the idea of storing on the, on the boats in the, you know, after they come back is, is a good idea. And finding a place for them that's not on the docks is still ideal, but I don't, I don't know.
Did everyone read what Kim sent out this afternoon? And did you read this where it's obviously a barge, is it floating vessel, and it cannot be moved around like any other boat? So it typically doesn't require permitting, it's going to be a fixed stationary location for a lengthy period of time. And if we ask or tell the agencies, then they will likely say it needs to be permitted as a floating dock structure.
It's, it's a, it's a flat top boat, and we don't have any requirements in our mortgage agreements that any of the boats that are now on the docks actually go out, so.
Mayor, when I said infrastructure, this is exactly what I meant, I mean, infrastructure is a pretty broad term. And I would consider a flat top boat in our harbor to be part of the harbor infrastructure. I think, Fran, that's a great idea, and, you know, you're absolutely right, storage is at a premium, so what do we do? We have to create more storage, and I think that's a wonderful idea, does it have to be tied to the docks, though?
No. Where would it be?
Well, I don't know, could we tie it someplace else, that would provide the, you know, I don't know.
It would have to be convenient for the boats to put, put the crab pots on?
Well, I think on the north end someplace.
But again, that would be basically a permanent structure, because it's not meant to be moved away.
March through October, or? Whenever the fish, you know, March through October, April through October.
Well, yeah, I, I can understand that, but from October, well, fine, but for, for that period of time, it's a fixed structure over, over the war, and it, I'm, National Marine Fisheries Service would not permit that. We.
We don't know that.
We don't know that, but given what I've been hearing from P and D and from people who have worked on this, the likelihood of, of, of permitting that structure to the boat, or barge, or whatever you want to call it, to exist is pretty dicey, if you're involved. And whether the city, or, no, it doesn't have to be the city, it can be the boat captains, the boat owners, we could pay with. Still, it's a mitigation, mitigation of a city facility, Harbor is your cities. And so that is what the problem is going to be.
So, can I just propose that we as a city have two hundred and eighty spots? And we've got P and D's recommendation, can we not accept crab, crab pot storage in the two hundred and eighty spaces that we have, and establish a fee for whatever that fee is going to be, to use those spaces? And the city do a lottery that says, you know, anybody that's interested in, in a spot, here's, you need to go into the lottery. We draw the names of the people, they get the two hundred and eighty spaces, everybody else goes on a waitlist, or they come up with their alternative solution, which could be the flat top boat, it could be using the dock over at the fish plant, whatever, whatever they come up with. But as a business, they're going to need to come up with a solution, because we as a city only have two hundred and eighty spaces.
I'll second that.
Is that a motion?
I can, I can make that motion if we, if we want to, if we want to do that, which would be allow for crab storage on the docks, two hundred and eighty maximum spaces per the P and D recommendation, add a fee to be established by the city.
And insurance requirements?
With the insurance, with the insurance requirements, and that there'd be a lottery system established for the distribution of those two hundred and eighty spots.
I was just, I'm saying, the suggestion of using the fish plant pier is a possibility, and that could be if the city would lease that fish plant and the pier to somebody.
Yeah, it's not a problem for us to decide today, though, it's, it's a future problem, that when the two hundred and eighty spots are gone, and you have three hundred and fifty that need it.
That's what I'm saying, it could be downstream, that maybe we could work out a deal, the city could work out a deal on the fish plant pier, which would, in my opinion, accommodate a hundred and forty-five, at least a hundred and forty-five crab pots, maybe more, but not to any loss.
Sure.
Do we have a motion that you could, you could read back, or that you could?
Oh, I can't read back, but I just wanted clarification, do we have to do a lottery? Because here's the thing, I think one, I wrote down some notes, I wanted to think, one of the first things we should do is have them tell us what they need, maybe we find out that they don't, say, what's the max you can, what's the max you need, what's the minimum you need? And then get a report from them, find out what they need, and then if we find out we're going to go over, then we can do a lottery.
I'm okay with, with however, however you want to administer the two hundred and eighty.
Okay.
As long as it's fair and equitable to all of the boat captains down there.
Hundred percent fair and equitable.
Or more boat captains.
That's a good point.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I think that's what you're saying, if more people wanted the.
So then the question, so again, we're, we're back to the fine tune details, which, I mean, the details are perfect. How long do they get to keep their, their crab pots, is it an annual renewal, is it? You know, I think it's probably, should renew at the same time the mortgage does?
Yeah.
Because there's going to be a fee attached with it.
And we need to talk about, make sure we're all on the same page about the surface that goes under the crab pots.
Which is P and D recommendations, so the P and D recommendations are incorporated as part of the ordinance.
But do we want them on the docks at night, do we want the, I mean, after the boats come in, do we want the, do we want the stairs on the docks, I mean, everything that's on the docks is more and more of a hazard to the harbor.
But, but the recommendation is, is that they will not be, the stairs and ramps will be on the boats themselves, and, and.
And the, and the crab pots?
Pots. If, if that's what you, if that's what the city council says, that the pots will be stored on the boats, except.
When in use.
Well, no, except on whale washing.
Yeah.
Or if they're just going out on a regular fishing trip, or, you know, sailing with something, not a combo trip, then they'll be stored on the docks for that period of time.
So the mortgage, I mean, the amount of fee then would be per pot and per time frame, per hour, or something?
Well, it would be per boat.
Yeah, per boat.
Per boat, yeah, because the fact that you're going to store it doesn't make any difference whether you're going to store it there for three hours, four hours, twenty-four hours, or what have you. The fee for putting the pot on the dock is this.
And that wouldn't?
I mean, that, that's what the, that's what the city.
That wouldn't mean to non-charter boats, I mean, if you have a charter boat, you're not going to have crab pots.
So.
Councilor, before you do that, could you look at motion one on the second packet that I gave you? That was actually taken from one that Councilor Beasley made, the last name that I thought was pretty appropriate for what we're talking about.
I moved through a last story to crab pots on city docks per the recommendation from P and D Engineering memo nine twelve, and directed staff to work with city insurance company to address those details, and with the city attorney for review and approval of policies to protect the city. I would be okay with that, as long as we add that there will be a fee scandal associated with it.
Yes, that would, would a fee.
And that there, there would be a, some type of a, of a system put into place to assure that there was equitable distribution of the two hundred and eighty.
Okay. And what?
And, and of all, all of the stuff, excuse me, that everything that we have posted, that would be included in the Harbor regulation, is included in the Harbor regulation.
We would have been, we would want to bend the Harbor regulation once we got all the details.
Yeah, so that would come to us as a, as a natural ordinance, right?
Was your second still in standing?
It is.
Okay.
I think I made the second report of motion, so.
Oh. So, so discussion? What's that?
I don't have it for discussion. This is what I seconded to allow the storage of crab pots on the city docks per recommendations of P and D Engineering. Oh, anyway, motion number one here, with the additional fees and equitable distribution of the two hundred and eighty pots allowed. Motion number one here, with the additional fees and equitable distribution of the 280 pots allowed. Open this section.
I think it's good compromise. And so, um, what, so are we asking the charter, um, boat captains to put the pots in, um, in the ramps, stairs on the boats in the evening?
Yes, that's what, yeah.
So, so is that the, okay, so that's understood, that, that would be.
So we're charging them for a storage fee to be on the docks for next day.
So, so no, no pots would be allowed at night?
Correct.
Not even for non charter boats?
Right. No pots?
Right.
No stairs?
Appropriation.
Branches or anything as, uh, the reason for them.
Yeah. Appropriate, appropriate, appropriation codes and store the pots on, on, on their, on their boats, except when they are going out in the ocean and not.
Yes.
Then the crap pot should be on the dock while they're out and then when they come back.
Only during.
Yeah.
And definitely if they have one of the 280 spots.
Yeah.
They can't stick them on the dock if they don't have 280 spots.
Um, yeah, okay, okay, that's right.
Do you want to take a comment? I'll take one comment, Ken.
Yeah, you know, um, if we are going to be.
Um, pardon me, um, and pardon me, Eric, you can't, well, we're going to take others.
All right.
Let's restrict.
And I don't know if anybody else is going to, oh. See karma's gone and I don't know what I'm doing.
And we restricted to the two, five minutes.
Why?
No, I.
It's important to our group is five minutes.
I, 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 I mean, I, I just wanted to address the concern about going over the 280 pots. Um, rarely is everybody well washing everything, you know? So, I mean, usually about half are, are well washing. So I don't think they're concerned of going over the 280 pots while we're out there. You know, if you're fishing, when we're not crabbing, we're well washing. Um, it really, you know, I don't think it'll be come close to that 280. If, if we have to store our pots on the boats when they're in use. And it'll be super easy to see if the boat's not there and the pots are on the, are on the dock. But if the boat's there and the pots are on the dock, it's pretty pecking dry. So it's, it'll be easier to.
But there was a count of 398 pots.
Yeah, but that's, but that's, that's all the time. That's not what people are actually at well watching. You know, so that's, that's, that was a permanent thing.
Okay.
You know? But, but rarely are we all, but, I mean, never is everybody well watching all the time. So I don't think that having to do a lottery down the road or whatever will be necessary. Because I don't think there would ever be close to 280 pots on the docks at one time.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
Please.
Ken?
Yeah.
Sue Seesaw. If anybody wants to make comment online after she's finished, put your hand up please or just speak out after she's done.
Hi, uh, I'm with, so Ken and Doc. Um, I just was wondering if there was any concern about inspiring loyalty? Because I know that was a, a question about that, you know, equal business opportunity. But if you do a lottery every year, it might be difficult for somebody who one year has, you know, say they get 10 slots or whatever. And then the next year, that business is going to be, they don't know if they're going to get those same 10 slots again. And so then the next year, they're going to have to figure out something else to do with their pots because somebody else might get those pots. So if there's any concern about, you know, is there a way to be grandfathered? Like if you're given those pots and then maybe when that boat leaves, do they give those pots up or something like that? Um, or if that's a concern for anybody?
I haven't thought about it. We're just trying to, I will make a note of that and take a look at that. I'm looking at how we could win an observation.
I'll look in New York taxi.
Do my cam here. Okay.
Sorry, what's the comment?
I'm not sure, I haven't read.
Um, the model she's talking about is.
Could you cut off please?
Scott, what am I, the model she's talking about is how the managed taxi business in New York City, they're sold between taxi operator and the city owner.
Taxi operators. I'm with you now.
Yeah, well, the, the, the owner would sell their lot to another owner or, or, but that's, that's a model that you.
There are more, millions.
Millions, yeah. It's like a little bar now, yeah.
Another suggestion. I'm Cindy Chievo, right, Adele. Um, I have to tell you in my background, I grew up on a farm in the Midwest. And having to rotate crops is similar to what you have to do with rotating the fishing. And I also grew up as a nurse in the operating room. And I would tell you what, scheduling in operating room is a challenge because you don't control how long something takes. And you can't control how long this dock takes or that dock takes. And you have to allow for your personnel and all the people involved, and that person's life is on the line. So, uh, those things are really important to consider. And so the two things I came down to were, we need to understand the principles. And, I'll give you my note, the principles behind it that we're doing, why we're doing it and why, um, what's all involved, what the details are behind it. So thanks for being here, do what you're doing. Thank you.
Was there anybody online, Kim? I've seen everybody raising a hand. Anything online? Oh, Brady, um, any other discussion on the motion here for us? Kim, I'm going to ask you to take a little one. Okay, Counselor Beasley?
Hi.
Mayor Short? Yes. Counselor King?
Yes.
Counselor Re?
Yes.
Counselor Lawson?
Yes.
And Counselor Hesel?
Yes.
Thank you very much. We've got a lot of work to do yet. Thank you, Jeff, Brian, for all that we've done. And thank the harbor commission as well. This has been trying and we're going to make it work. We're going to make some, some, um, big progress.
Good on me, I want to thank Fran and Cindy.
Yes. Yeah. Absolutely. Thank you.
Finally, we've got new business coming in here. We have a, uh, community renewal grant, uh, before us. And has everyone had a chance to review Kim's notes in here? And then the, um, contracts have been also reviewed for, they're making some changes to them. So I'll let you adjust.
I, I was going to say, um, I kind of really been thinking about, we should pull the Acton one. Only because I saw you, the Acton, uh, the only reason is, is I've spoken to our city attorney and he had some points of clarification. He wanted Acton to make on some of the identification. Um, he's not real concerned about it because this is a planning grant and the master service agreement that they used, actually talks about pollution identification, but there won't be any pollution involved. So I sent it out to Acton and they're going to have their legal team look at the suggestions. So I think we should go ahead and pull that one, say that one for the 12th, only because I just don't think I have a final agreement. Um, we do have a good scope of work, so I think it's going to be fine, but it's just gives clarification from the attorneys. And since legal meeting, you know, it, it, it'll be okay with a little bit.
So the one thing I did see in here, but I might have missed it, is in this, um, um, agreement where we're going to essentially loan the upfront planning money and then get, they pay back.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see that paying back as part of our motion here.
Well, the, what happens is that we'll give them the money, but then we'll, well, first of all, we'll submit to the grant and say we want 30%. Okay? They'll give us the 30%. We'll use it to pay, um, Acton evidence. So, but in the meantime, what I'm saying is that until they give us that 30%, if we do, if we have any upfront work for Acton to do to get started.
Yeah.
We would pay them out of professional services. And then we've already spoken to Acton about this and they understand it, but we would pay it back. Internal tracking.
Yes, but I don't see that in, um, that, um, agreement that we're going to be, that we do reimburse.
Are you talking about the professional services agreement with Acton?
No, that, um.
Are you talking about the grant agreement with Oregon Department of Energy? That we're going to give the money upfront and then it will be reimbursed the 30, at, when we get the grant. So we're paying it out of professional services. But that, that that money would be reimbursed when we receive the grant. I just don't see where that's written. I, maybe I'm not, you're not explaining this right. So we're going to submit a form, Acton's going to help us submit a form that says we want this 28,000. Yeah. I don't know how long it's going to take them to do it. But I mean, may want Acton to start doing it.
Right.
So we'll say, okay, we're going to say, out of my mind, Ed, we're going to say we're going to spend $10,000 with Acton to 10,000. When that 28,000 comes in, I will apply it to the professional, 10,000 of it to the professional services line in the budget. So the money comes in, but I have a, in fact, this document here, I just sent this. This will be the form I meant to send with you that I will be tracking every expenditure so that we can keep an eye on that money.
Okay.
So this is how I'm going to start tracking grants and other projects going forward. So you will see these reports that will show you where it's going out, what's come in, what's being used for that sort of stuff.
Will you put that on the yellow sticky on the wall?
No. A yellow sticky? I don't like stickies.
So if we're delaying Acton, then do we do it?
We'll wait on Acton, but the professional services are the, um, excuse me, in my grand terms, the grant.
Performance.
Agreement, performance agreement. I wanted to go ahead and give this to you ahead of time. Um, this is what it will look like. Again, I don't know how long it's going to take them to do this. It may come next week and it's supposed to come next week, but we don't have a meeting for a while. And they're going to give us 30 days to get this grant. So what I'm saying is this is the grant. You know, this is the agreement. We're not going to have a lot of wiggle room to negotiate anything on it. So I'm asking is that when they send us the final, as long as it's the same thing, to get the okay from the mayor to go ahead and then sign it, then we can request the 30%. That's all I'm asking for, for this.
No, I agree with everything. I do, and I understand what you're saying. But where it says the budget impact on page 39, 103, it would make me feel a hell of a lot better where it says right there that, um, initial expenditure of up to 38,500 from professional services on the general fund, pending receipt of 30% preliminary funds from the grant award to reimburse the professional services line item.
Okay.
Thank you.
You thought I was kidding about the yellow sticky?
I want to see your sample of the yellow sticky.
Is the, um, if we could go to the court, is that going to be too late for the Acton?
Not for the Acton. The Acton we can work with. Okay, um, we can work with them. They're going to be real easy, they're going to be real easy to work with. It's just, I'm worried more about the grant agreement because they give you tight timelines on everything. Um, and we have a six month, they've already indicated to be their, their principal for the, for Acton that's really to work on this, so. They are excited about, they want to get done and they want to have my goodness too, so. Um, but that will let you know after we talk. It's just, is, is, given a motion to allow the mayor to sign this, not the Acton one, the grant one, if it comes in before the 12th, so we can get moving on this and request 30%.
So it's the state of Oregon Department of Energy performance agreement?
Yes.
That you're wanting us to allow the mayor to sign if it comes in before?
Yes. And the final word, as long as it looks like this, which it will, they'll just warn me L L R rates.
Okay.
Are you moving that, the performance agreement part?
Yeah, only the performance agreement part though, not the Acton contract.
Right.
So, yeah, I can move that we, we allow the mayor to sign the state of Oregon Department of Energy performance agreement when it comes in with the yellow highlights being filled in by Acton?
Uh, yellow highlights be filled in by Oregon Energy, Department of Energy.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. It's been motion accepted to approve the performance agreement for the planning grant with Oregon Department of Energy and authorize the mayor to execute the final performance agreement as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes? Keep it on here.
As long as these guys are here, can I ask them about the paragraph in Kim's that's missing? So the hydrogen component of this is what?
Oh, um, that's not what I wrote back to. I don't know if you saw my email.
It says it's battery storage backed up by a hydrogen.
It's, it's, there's some stuff right there. Um, anyways, sorry.
What page do you want to say?
I think this is on page number 39. I just want to make sure I understand.
I know, it's.
What is, what is the project?
I took it right out of the rip, but it's supposed to stop right on page 39. Where is it?
It says the concept of providing power using a microgrid that consists of a.
So it says, microgrid that consists of a solar photovoltaic array power storage. When there's a power outage, emergency period. So that the power should be.
Battery storage and backed up by a hydrogen.
Oh, hydrogen.
I just didn't know what a hydrogen.
That's a hydrogen fuel cell. Fuel cell. I totally missed that. I took it right out of what I thought was.
So it's a hydrogen fuel cell that's going to back up the battery?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Perfect, I, I just, that's what I thought all the discussion was about, was hydrogen fuel cells. But I, I didn't, I didn't fully understand it, okay.
My apologies, I actually didn't even see that when I read it. Okay, I did do fuel cell.
Perfect, now I know.
This is very. Does anyone from the Green, has the course want to, Joe, you want to?
Sure.
I guess, how you doing there?
Green Bay. Thank you, Tom. Well, isn't it a great day to be in Deepwater Bay?
Yes.
It's all part of something positive, right?
Joe Cannon.
I'm Joe Cannon. Uh, I'm the, uh, green energy director for Deepwater Bay. Uh, I have a little support. And all of our group here is proactive. Uh, this all stemmed from a, a problem we had last January with power outage. So we found that there's an Oregon O D O E. It's often green energy resilient ranks. So that's where this all came from. Um, we researched a lot of different options. Uh, there's wind, there's solar, there's biomass, there's umpteen, whatever. Had to fit into our perspective or our command center, it's built, we're, we're sorry. It's a long drawn out process. None of us have ever been through the grant process more than before. This is good.
No, I'm sorry, I was going to.
Oh, right. And so, um, it's an educational process and we learned a lot every day. Every meeting we have, we gain more information. What we'd like to do long term and short term, short term is power is building with green energy fuel cell that's completely 100% off grid in an emergency, so we have our command center toward it. Right, and we will have power outage. As we grow, we will add more, you know, as we got developed, as we go. Uh, we wrote into this, uh, photovoltaic solar, which are solar panels, also battery backup, also fuel cells. Acton is going to come and do an analytical, uh, electric system as per each green system as to what's best for us in our application. Once they certify with their PD engineers and stamp it, we can, whatever the system is, go forward to the state in a relatively short amount of time along the rails that we have restrictions of. Is there a law? And they have a board that gives an assigned points. Because we are in the first phase of this loan, of this grant. The grant is strictly, um, on a really strict timeline. Then we apply for a construction grant. And we were told the other day, we had a conversation for over an hour with the administrators of, of the system, that a few of these companies or groups got kicked out. Uh, we went up on this last group, we were there were 80 applicants. These aren't individuals, these are cities, municipalities, utilities, large, you know, government entities. And a lot of them didn't make it, we did. So there was a number that I haven't seen certified that actually got approved. But we're unique because what we're asking for, and I've read a lot of the ones that granted, is usually just a building where we're looking at long term, many sites in our community to give us resilient. Because we're really planning for the ultimate, which is that's a K T A fault. That's coming our way sooner or later.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good fault, thank you. And so that's kind of our plan. And we're completely off grid. This is strictly for our system, is what we're planning for. Initially, we start with this one. So that's where we're at. Uh, there is, uh, Acton, I researched and went through every company I could find that could help us, that would work for free. Let's get serious, you know, everyone has a, an hourly rate or whatever. This was the best group I could find and they were the disaster preparedness and energy green systems. There are some things that. There are some things that they work on, uh, they're also tied in with the hydrogen fuel cell people. And some other solar people and some other people, that's what they do. But their purpose is to administer the implications, you know, the, uh, the process, make sure that everything is 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 going to be correct. We're also gonna have a monitoring system in this building on a screen that you can watch on your, um, handheld and see what what the systems are doing at any given time. Then they have some private technologies that they own, just for examples that we have. Um, it's gonna be, you know, determined by them, like what our best system is that we can have for this facility. That's the sort of, um, we're, else we can turn, we're leaning towards fuel cells because that makes the most sense in our application that they have to certify that. So question this.
Well, thank you very much, and this is so impressive that you got it at this whole competition, it really is. Um, so I've been reading lately, uh, these, uh, smaller wind that go this way.
Yeah, it's called vertical access.
Vertical access, is that a possibility to look into that photovoltaics?
Yes, it's, uh, it's, everything's on the table.
Okay.
Um, there's advantages and disadvantages. Anything that's individualized like that, you have to transition. So now you're looking at where you're gonna place it. It's gonna harm the birds, it's gonna harm lightning, you know, all the factors involved. And how are we gonna get that power from wherever that site is, this building?
Oh, I was thinking on top of these smaller systems.
Certain places it would work, but certain people have animosity towards wind turbines.
I'm not talking about these.
Right, you're talking vertical, they look like a barrel, they look like.
Yeah, uh-huh, yeah.
And so. Yeah, it's all the chimneys, but you know, you gotta be objective. We don't know, you know.
But it's still on the table.
Yes, everything's on the table.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Cause we have wave power, we have a lot of people interested in that. And so, you know, it's all, it's open. We got a tight timeline, we have to get this done, and we have to apply for the next phase, basic ponder. That's why we're asking for this. It's all part of that, we could request thirty percent, just get it moved, because we just, we just can't wait.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
And our first, um, demonstration will be on January twenty fifth next year, hopefully, what, uh, Saturday, at the community center.
We're gonna, we're gonna bring, uh,
Lots of information.
We're gonna bring in a, uh, hydrogen fuel cell and have a hydrogen fuel cell demonstration. Up here, and so that will help everyone understand what they're looking at. Uh, they're quiet, uh, there's no waste of water, and they have a little heat, and that's it, they don't make any noise. You wouldn't even know it was on, so. Any other question?
Um, just one thing about hydrogen fuel cells, um, they can be explosive, is that true?
Not in this particular, um, anything can explode, right, there's never a fuel site, but not the way this configuration is that we have explained to them, they have, um, um, bottles with like S C P tanks, self-contained B ring apparatus, and it's at ten thousand P S I. And they drop these things out of airplanes in on crates for the military. So, could it happen? Yes. But chances are not really that. Anything can happen, I never say never, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any more for the other thing? All right, thank you.
Good job, thank you.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Moving on here, thank you, thank you all, the green team, good work on it.
Congratulations.
Moving on here, then, um, can we have a a quote from the F C S C?
Break, break screen.
So at the last at the last meeting, um, councilman was so brought up, and the council agreed to timely reach out to F C S group, we did our last wire sewer and S T C rate study to find out about what it would cost to get it updated. I ran, I got the quote and I provided it, I ran a quote wire, city engineer who has experience in this, and he said the quote is perfectly aligned with like we charged to do one right now. So, um, I just need to know if the council wants to get forward with it. Now, one of the things we did talk to him about, though, is the original quote, I think said November, it's probably be pushed out fast at the first of the year because you need a good capital improvement program. And he's working, our city engineer is working on that with me ready to get something like that, but he won't have that done. We did move it up to February, by the way, or the C I, the I G O M, we need to move it up, so they won't be getting started until we get close to having the capital improvement program, is that one for the S T C.
Well, I think it would be really cool if we really got started on this sooner than later, because um, we have already all the time with Gleneadon Service District, and we need to start negotiating with them on our agreement as well, so.
And yes, we got.
Does somebody use this for the budget?
This is not that.
This is not, it's.
So, I, if I could.
Sure.
You know, I, I was the one that brought it up.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking, you know, we we absolutely need to do something.
Yes.
Um, it's, I, I don't think they have a good list of what the projects were. And so it sounds like that list is coming in January now, and so, um.
What projects, I'm sorry?
The list of projects that that fall underwater in sewer that are gonna need extreme amounts of capital. I am gonna need the funding that are outside of the normal, the normal maintenance types of things. A new water treatment plant, um, there was the Gleneadon sewer line.
Outside of, lots, lots.
Uh, lots of, lots of line work to down Williams and all that kind of stuff, that was not originally on what, uh, they looked at. However, I would also say that, you know, it probably should go through proper budget cycle. And since we're not gonna have the capital numbers until January, anyway, I would say that we probably just need to defer this until that budget cycle, but I would like to encourage that we look at other options besides just F C S tier.
Oh, I can put an R T do this, and there may be a grant fund.
And and the reason that I'm doing that is because I, you know, F C S has done the last couple of them, I believe. And maybe it's time that we get a different set of eyes on it, um, and have, you know, somebody that's experienced in the area, but can can look at it with a a different perspective than what F C S has.
I do know somebody that can do that.
And and the reason that I also would like to to do that is because I think there's a lot of history related to Gleneadon that is in that rate study, and I think that we just need to clever the new, that that, we need a new fresh set of eyes on that, because the council has said we are not gonna move forward with Gleneadon. We all know that D E Q is gonna make us process their sewage for a certain amount of time. And so, all of that needs to be taken into consideration, because, um, their wastewater is not, we we don't have sufficient capacity. And, uh, in our plant or in the transmission is my understanding. And so, as we get into those negotiations with Gleneadon as to whatever D E Q is going to require, we need to have a good solid understanding of not only what the cost to do that is going to be, and frankly, they should pay for for anything that we need to do in the interim period, that would be my opinion on this, but um, we also need to know what the impact on our system is gonna be for that period of time. And I just think that a fresh set of eyes might be beneficial for that, so I would like to see it done absolutely. Do we need to do it immediately, it's, I don't think it's critical, and since we don't have all the capital, I think we should wait until after we have that list, that's my opinion.
That's a good point, thank you. Yeah, I I think you made good points, I wasn't aware of a lot of that. Um, but this may be something that we could get grant funding for, and I'm wondering if we can ask our grant writers to specifically look at, um, grants for updating system development fees.
I am not seeing any grant in all the grants I've looked at, but I will ask.
It it's worth asking, because.
I mean, normally I haven't seen a quarter or water racer or a system development charge update, more along the lines of whether they would update our master plans, but.
But even that, yes, because, um, there's those moments in D E Q too, that may have something to do, anyway, if you could ask them, that would be helpful. So they are P M A'd after January?
Well, it sounds like it's on another next budget cycle, we'll probably do an R P after the first of the year, so I'll remember to put in the budget, but the budget won't get approved until then to, so this would start until July, actually, so. Right, we'll do an R P, unless we get grant funding. Unless we get grant funding, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on the and if, excuse me, if F C S doesn't do it and they're familiar with us, it might cost more than this figure that we have of that.
Mayor, I would say this, uh, that when we negotiate with, uh, Gleneadon Beach on this, for the duration of however long this contract lasts, I think that we ought to make an effort, uh, through an M O U to to claim part of the, uh, systems development charges that they charge.
That's not illegal, I'm sorry.
Well, here's the deal, uh, when you pay a systems development charge in sewer, uh, that's intended to, uh, take care of the entire system, not just the lines that Gleneadon Beach runs to our sewer plant. Uh, they have, they have, there has to be some money in it to the sewer plant too. And if it's illegal to, for us to play some of the S T C charge, then we should at least negotiate it for it. It's my feeling, uh, because we're getting nothing on S T C's at Gleneadon Beach, but we've got a sewer plant to maintain and include, and they're on it.
And they pay. Any other discussion? Okay, we've got a, uh, proposal before us for the Harvard Commission request.
I just realized I didn't do a staff report on this, and I don't know why I didn't do it, I think this missed it, but this is just, the Harvard Commission has reviewed this proposal, so this is just going out basically so we can get a feel for what's out there, we know there's, it was from another company who's interested in providing fuel to Deepo Bay, but we don't know the cost, so this is just going out for an R P guy, out there.
So, so I have a question.
Yes, please.
Um, can I? Yeah, um, so what I didn't understand is that it looks like your, this R P is asking, um, I mean, the city is gonna be charged by this fuel company to provide the service. And so then we change the the rates of the, um, the fuel cost to cover the city's cost, is this on?
It was a small administrative, yes, there's a small, from what I understand, and this spreadsheet's kind of evil, but from what I understand, there's a small administrative fee that's charged, maybe like one point five percent or something like that, that's charged, so they would have taken whatever Carson charges them to do that. They'd take the base rate of what chart, what we pay to have fuel, and then they add this percent on, and that's what they pass on to the people who buy the fuel at Harvard.
But it's charged to the city.
Correct.
So how do we recruit those charges? How does the city recruit the charges cost, um, um, charged by the fuel company?
Because of that one, because of they, people buy, maybe they can't hear, people buy the fuel plus the one percent, or one point five.
And that comes back to the city.
And that goes back to the city.
It's added to the cost formula.
Yeah, it's added to the cost formula, and that comes back to the city, they pay for it.
So essentially, the fueling company is being paid to provide those services by the city, but as we city recuperates the cost from the fuel charges. Okay, thank you. Do you need a motion for this R P to pull out?
I know, it doesn't need a motion, you guys have, um, it's, it's, it's just something I would want, we talked about doing, and if everybody is okay with us going forward, see what we've got, we're ready, we don't actually have changes.
Does the date seem really aggressive?
Oh, the dates I need to change, yeah, I'll change the dates, no, you're right, I'll change the dates. This is what I submitted today, I should have updated the dates, but, um, I will look at reasonable dates and, uh, update the dates. October then.
And and they're using our fuel storage tank, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, um. Are the insurance likely to us, is that covered in this R P?
Yes. Yes.
Um, did we get a, um, recommendation from our insurance care, carriers, thank you.
Yes.
And since the harbor's gonna be closed, it doesn't, I mean, there's not like a huge urgency, because I'm guessing we're not gonna be filling a lot, a lot of fuel tanks.
And pumping will only be on, um, the fuel dock.
The fuel dock, yeah.
And, um, the fueling company will have to bear responsibility for any um, any spills, or will have to have the equipment?
Well, we have the equipment, they have some too, right, right, the cars and whatever, we have our own equipment, so there's a spill, we have something in areas.
Yeah, oh, yeah, they do, yeah, we have, we have a model that.
Some time, or somebody has extra time, I'd really like to know what the equipment is that we have at Harvard for fuel prevention. Because, um, there was spills, hydraulic fluid spills in the harbor a number of years ago, and the only thing that was available were boons at the Coast Guard Station that were over fifty feet long.
Well, we have one, we definitely have a boot, but I'll get.
But we needed a smaller container, I'd like to see the list of, um.
We'll, we'll get it, yeah. I'll get a summer, but he is sick this week, he went on vacation, brought a visitor back, just like past one or seven.
That's not, it's not. Yes, thank you. Whoopsie.
Nobody's allowed to go on vacation anymore.
I am, I like the idea in here that was proposed about disaster recovery land. You know, when, when, when and if the disaster occurs, how do they intend to keep us from fueling?
Right, I found out in another city, um, one coast, I remember it wasn't, I thought that was awesome.
That's excellent. Yeah, especially since the boats are gonna be our lifeline.
Exactly.
Okay, so I'll update the dates, and, um, I will be here one morning, if I can hit your.
Okay, thank you.
That would be.
That's why I just felt the management could talk about it. Um, has everyone had a chance to review the charges from Lake, North Lincoln Sanitary District?
You've already approved, Jennifer, this is just the paperwork.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion. I'm going to approve resolution five six nine dash two four, setting solid waste removal fees. For some ordinance two seven seven as amended, you're proceeding resolution four five two.
Okay, thank you, is there a second? I'll second that. It's been moved to the second to increase the solid, uh, waste disposal fees as presented, is there any discussion on the motion? I do, sorry, talking a lot. Guess it's always good, I apologize. So, this is a question for North Lincoln, and I'm not opposing the motion, I'm just curious, why are commercial rates for the same sized bins lower than resident, I mean, why are residential rates higher than commercial rates? For the same sized bin, it seems like the burden is on residents rather than the commercial entities. I mean, it's quite substantial difference. Is it because there's more? Yeah, I don't know, because it's like.
I I can ask, but.
I mean, it's quite a, quite a bit.
Right, can I call Tina? How much do I see with Tina, Tina's kind of. Oh, or Lexi's. That's right, Lexi's. Anyway, I think I would definitely.
It's like eight dollars difference, it's for a cart, it's a lot.
Yeah, I think she did explain, but I.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, the Koho parking lot redesign.
Wasn't Koho was the one guy, the horn?
The horn.
Yes.
Oh.
I'll meet you guys there.
Yeah.
It's because Brittany hasn't ordered a sign yet.
We have one ordered, but.
That's only because we're waiting for the parking lot to be redesigned.
The city knows the Taunton parking lot, the Anna parking lot, the Jolene Park, so we changed the names, uh, of the current, of the former owners in the city open to popular fish that are being conned.
So, I, this one is, was kind of hard for me to parse a little bit, but, so we got the grant, George fifty six thousand. Um, I budgeted three hundred thousand for this project in total. Not thinking that the Koho lot would be pulled out separately, which is a different, I thought it's all gonna be one. So.
What was all, so Koho lot plus?
It would be the Bay Street plus doing the redesign of Koho.
So Bay, Bay Street and Koho.
Right, we, I thought when we were talking about it was, it was all gonna be in one, but, um, but it had to be the way they did it, had to be separate, but it also has to be done. You can't do the Bay Street improvement project without redesigning the Koho parking lot. Um, which would allow for the A D A, for the restrooms and A D A parking, and make that safety. So, but because it's separate, we kind of have to run it as a separate R P, all that fun stuff, so make them in this and that, but so I budgeted three hundred, we're gonna get two fifty six, it'll be a hundred and sixty eight difference between those two, so the way this works out, in. So, the way this works out, and, and city engineer did the budget, the way this works out is that it does still kind of put that 300,000 that I already did, when you talk about what the reimbursement comes back at, $256,000, and change.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yeah.
Uh, not too long ago, a vehicle went over the side there, it looks like it's very dangerous. How will this project address that danger?
I think I provided, where's the, there are some nice, they have some nice curbs that will be like there.
Oh, we, we have a drawing from there. To be looked at, um, we'll have them back up, they had the event today, so they were on the table a little bit, you, it's a little bit of a.
Yeah. Um, did I, did I, I didn't provide the.
But there's any concrete there.
It was, it was as a vehicle was designed, they're gonna put.
There's a car, I know this car.
Yeah, they're gonna put the bump out, or the bump of curbs. And then I also asked them to, part of this design is to put some kind of a landscaping barrier, so it doesn't get rainy like it normally does, but it also protects the edge a little bit. So, they're, they're talking about even maybe possibly putting a little fence to kind of just keep people from falling over the edge.
Protecting the view plus the, yeah, the original.
But I think that was in the, is what I, just didn't say this again.
So, so I'm sorry, is this going out, this, we are paying the engineer to design it for 147, or this is going out to bid?
He's already designed it as part of the Bay Street project. This will go out to bid to get the actual price to do the job, this is just their estimate of what it will be.
Wait. To actually, I'm sorry, to add.
Do the construction, to do the construction, it has been redesigned. Yes, it's been redesigned, and I thought it was with the, I thought it was with the Bay Street big drawings that were on cable for a while.
Yeah, it has the sidewalk.
So, we would have pulled those out again, but I can also email them to you.
I can have them ready tomorrow.
Yeah, I thought it was there on the backside of the page.
It shows the sidewalk and the park.
The sidewalk, and the, and the restrooms and everything like that.
Park and, park and line, so the restrooms will.
Would you like me to re, yeah, that would be awesome.
Yeah, we want to wait until we see that stuff.
No, I don't think, no, I wouldn't.
Can I ask a question?
Just please.
Um, Schedule A cost is 247,000. Schedule B cost, which I'm assuming is Koho, is the 147,95.
Right.
You said they were gonna come in at the $300,000 budget, but those two numbers add together is 400,000. And so, um, if we're at 147,000, and so on pages 84 and 85, we've kind of got the, the detail of what the Koho parking lot would be, which is at 147,000. Um, that fits within what was budgeted. But where's the other 100,000 coming from to get the Bay Street redone, because that's the 247,000.
Okay, so our grant is for 256,000.
Right.
Okay, we got the bid, and he got the recommendation, the bid came in for about 319,000 to do Bay Street, not Koho. So, it went over the estimate a little bit. Um, we were always gonna have to pay something, like 256, small city allotment grant wouldn't ever pay the whole thing. So, we have to pull a little bit out of that 300,000 just to cover that cost of that. So this would be additional, um, where the difference would be the grant in this 319 plus the 147.
Yeah, so my, I guess my question is, is we've budgeted 300,000. The project for both Bay Street and Koho is gonna be 396, according to the engineer. Where's the other 100,000 coming from, because it's not in the budget?
Other professional services.
It's construction, it's not professional services.
But it's, that's true, that's true, probably, I have to tell you that.
I mean, it has to come out of the budget somewhere, and I'm just curious where it's coming from.
I have to convert it.
Because it's obviously an overage on the, it's an overage on the Bay Street slash Koho project. We didn't budget for that much.
Since it's mostly engineering class, wouldn't that go under professional services?
No, this is actually construction, so I'm here.
Oh, got it. Yeah, the design was already.
That's professional services paid for.
Where's Schedule A?
Schedule A we didn't get, because that's the Bay Street project. So all we're doing is Koho here, so Schedule A would be the, the, the Bay Street part. And since this is just Koho, that's the Schedule B that we're seeing in the detail.
So what would you look at doing is looking at what else we have in the capital outlay. For example, we have money in there for some overlays, which are coming in less. We also have 100,000 in for curbs, ramps to the highway, which we probably won't expend, because the initial numbers are gonna be over 100,000, so, um, there's some flexibility in there.
So, Madam Mayor, but in order to do that, does that mean we have to reconvene the budget committee to, to make those type of changes?
No, you do not. It has to be more than 10%.
So what is if we're not using?
And, and you would still be using within the capital fund, so you're not using from another fund. If I said, let's pull from, um, let's use some of Parks Fund, because we would be, you know, we can still do that, but we're not actually pulling anybody, we're using what's in there, just the, the blue lines are just.
Sure, it's, it is more than 10%, I mean, it's, we're talking 30%.
But that would only be, correct, but that would only be of the entire budget, not that particular, of the entire budget.
Excuse me, what did you say, we're not likely to use ODA something?
The ODA Highway 101 ramps, he's still working on that, but that's gonna come in more expense than 100,000 to do any work on that.
Where would that?
So we're probably not gonna be doing anything on that this year. And the overlays are coming in under what the 145, that was.
Overlays?
So overlays for the various streets that he has done.
Okay.
So essentially, in the capital outline, streets improvements, we have 525,000 in there to do Bay Street, whatever we have left, and we're to do Koho, to do his overlays.
And are, are we gonna make it?
Mm-hmm.
His overlays are gonna be less, and we're still gonna be able to come up with.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Yeah, his overlays came in cheaper than I thought they would. In fact, I think even adding the street, it's gonna be cheaper.
Yeah, the asphalt dropping.
Yes.
So if, if the question then is, do we, do we need a motion to do this?
A, a motion to approve moving forward with this, we wanna make sure you guys are okay with it. Um, I just like say yes, motion approval with Schedule B, and we'll go out the bid.
So what happens if the bid comes in higher than what he's with?
We can reduce it.
We can just choose not to do it.
Choose not to do it, there's always a line in the budget, in the project documents, the city reserves the right to not do it. So in fact, when I present you with the waiting bid of the Bay Street, it did come in over, it came in near his estimate, but over what, for example, the, the grant is. You could choose not to do it, you could choose to wait, but we'll lose the grant money if we don't do it.
So I'm just gonna, in fact, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we approve the engineer's cost estimate for redesign of Koho parking lot.
A second, Madam Mayor.
A second to accept the Schedule B as presented, to move the Koho parking lot. Any further discussion on the motion? I'm sorry, is that really the action that's requested, or is it to go, go out for bid?
If you approve the cost estimate, we just assume it's gonna be going out to bid, you don't need an actual motion, but if you want to. You could say approve, uh, you could approve Schedule A and authorize it going out to bid, if you'd like, but usually approve most project things, we can, we can operate on it. But it's.
Yeah, it wasn't clear to me that that's what it was doing.
And I'm okay with it. Are you okay with that, Madam?
Yeah, thanks. Did you get that in, right?
Yeah, I did.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I didn't. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, ordering and public meeting law updates, has there been a chance to read this and memorize it?
I can, so I can give personal opinion. I sat for two and a half hours of this class. Um, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's pretty intense.
Yeah.
Um, they do a lot of quizzing and that kind of stuff, and there are sessions on executive session, and what you can and can't do, and how you can and can't do it. Uh, there was a lot of information there. Um, I found the, the key thing that came out of it was, uh, there's, there's, uh, a rule related to quorums and staff being intermediaries. And so, um, if, for example, I were to have a conversation with staff, and then staff has a conversation with the mayor, and I had a conversation with Brady, and Brady had a conversation with Kim, but then Kim went to the mayor, and Brady went to Fran, we now have established a quorum. Even though, because we had two city intermediaries, and so it becomes very difficult for us, in my opinion, to be able to do work with staff. And so, I don't know if there's anything we can do as a city to recommend that when, uh, counselors have conversations with staff, that they have to, that staff has to restrict the conversation to just those two that can turn around and, and bring in other. I, I, I just don't know if there's anything we can do. But I found it a little bit disturbing, especially for a city our size, where we do work with staff quite a bit, and the, the fact that you could all, totally not on purpose, create a quorum that's, um, now is a violation of public meeting law. And the other thing that I found interesting is that, uh, it is now a personal liability. So the violations of public meeting law are fined to the individuals, not to the city.
Right, and the city cannot use the insurance coming to.
Correct, no public money at all, if you use it.
Um, Kim, do other states have this kind of thing, or is strict?
Um, states have a very variety of things, um, I know that the Brown, for instance, in California is pretty strict, but, um, it's, I don't know what they have as far as trainings concerned, because now they have this requirement, but they want people on commissioners and committees and council to have this training once a year. Um, so, and that's why I put these councils down there, it fills up fast. So, uh, the most important thing to remember is when you're having discussions, is whether or not it would lead to something that you would have to make a decision on. So if you're having a general discussion, like about, say, for example, the Pet Palooza, I'm not gonna make a decision on the Pet Palooza, so you could have conversations like that. But now if you're gonna make a decision on, uh, approve of a grant, you know, for example. So, these are, it's the difference, I didn't hear what you said, so I would probably explain. But if you're going to be having a, a discussion that will lead to you making a decision, it's all about that decision-making authority. So, um, it will be up to Brady and I to make sure that we let you know, but it's always best if you can provide your comments to one person, which would be me, and we won't have to worry about incorporating involved in whether or not we reached a, we reached a quorum, so.
That's my question. Um, there, there's a link in here to log in and register and pick a day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you just, you can click on that link or just go to that link. The dates are filling up fast, I just went through the end of, of, of whatever was available through January. Um, I signed up for one, but the dates are filling up. This will be the second time I go through, and I go through all the trainings all the time, because it's my job. But it's important to know that if you're going to be on the council next year, if you're gonna be on the board of many next year, you're going to have to have this training.
Some other question, Kim, is it on a computer training, like on a laptop? But it's individual?
No, it's a group.
It was a Zoom meeting.
You'll sit on, you'll sit on your own computer and, you know, I might use a computer, but you will have other people there, so.
It's a, there's tests and things like that.
It's not a, it's not an official test, there's on, they, they, they test you throughout. Which you're in the process.
They do polls online, quizzes online, polls online, it's pretty simple.
Polls online, yeah, that's, that's what they do, right.
Thank you.
Um, one other thing, and I, as a city, I'm, I'm, you know, we might recommend this, but they do onsite. And so, you know, there's a new council coming in January, and so it might be advantageous to have staff
Like, do they have to order?
just check to see if they can do it onsite, and get as many people in as possible.
I already have. I already have, I already keep this in mind, as soon as they know what their training is for next year. I'll be first on this.
Okay. I mean, we would, we get Zoom stuff slide, but it's always nice when you can get, and, and we'll be inviting all the, the PAs, missions, and everybody at the same time, so we can get it all done and done here, or on time. Um, okay, city staff reports. Do you have any updates for that, Kim, or?
Um, just a quick update on the harbor restoration part, excuse me, the harbor docks replacement project. Um, they will be staging, basically bringing equipment in starting the end of next week. I thought they were gonna start the ending this week, but they changed the wire, they're gonna start the beginning next week. So, um, when Roy gets back, one of the first things we'll be doing is to make sure that all the votes are where they need to be, and everything's off the docks, so, because they're gonna be ready to hit the ground running on the first, or we said, they say it's a bar like that. Um.
Yeah, crane will be coming in in the 20s.
And barge, I'm looking forward to them, seeing them put the barge in there, what that's gonna look like. Um, let's see, I don't think anything else has been updated. Primarily what I could do so far this week is dealing with the wreck discovery. I have to pull 10 years of perpetrator lines projects. Um, that's 32 files, and scan them and upload them. So, uh, with a card that we've here, that's kind of how I'm gonna do that right now, so that's just taking a lot of time right now, getting the files ready. Um, I think that, is it, Brady, can you get your anything else?
Oh, just busy, busy.
Just busy.
Getting ready for the rainy season.
Um, we had some staff changes. Here, I can remember that I left the city, I don't know how that started, but I heard that this week. Um, so you all know that Diana, our time specialist, is not gonna be working for Lincoln City. I'm very excited for her. Jenny, who's our utility billing special office, is moving up into Diane's position, and she's gonna do a great job. However, that leaves us, uh, utility billing vacancy, so in the meantime, Jenny will be doing a Diane and doing two jobs. So, so, uh, and billing's coming up, so a little bit of patience will be asked for. Um, we're down two people in the public works crew. One will be, he's retiring at the end.
In, in this month, yeah.
So we'll be down three public works crew. Uh, it's a good time of year to do it, because they've come on, we're on, but, uh, so we're, we're putting out for positions right now, we'll see how those, so. We're just, business, just living on as we can. And if you don't know, Brady's 30th year with the city is a stunt.
Any other questions on projects?
Just a, a comment. You know, uh, I, I'm just gonna bring it up probably every time that we talk, the audit. You know, we, we, it has been on the city's agenda since 2020 to do these audits, and I see we're delayed here, and obviously it's staffing and, and that kind of thing, but it is, it, it's gonna be imperative that we get these things done as quickly as we can get them done. And, you know, I, I just would encourage the staff to work on it when they can and as often as they can.
I promise you, I do what I can, I can, as soon as these files are done, I'll be able to do that.
I'm sorry, which files were these?
The, the, yeah.
Custom, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'd go down to the basement and find these files, and it's just nasty, it's so bad.
Okay.
I'm waiting for a spider to come out, but, but, any other history?
I forgot, under my scribbling here, all the notes.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I would like to suggest to council to move our next meeting to November 12 instead of. Okay, any other, um, closing public comments? Any public comments? Cindy Trufel again, I just wanna compliment you all on the harbor drills, and especially staff, very impressive. I actually got two, but I got this all for thirty this afternoon, and I roughly went through all of this, um, before the meeting, so, so it's a little bit late. So, um, just thank you all for what you're doing, and God bless you, you're safe, take care. Is it you listening, or a hundred person?
I don't know.
Oh, you're not going, oh, good.
Valerie's smart.
Valerie's one, so we didn't, okay.
I agree.
And we're ho, holding a going away party for Kim, is that right?
That's apparently what the city thinks.
Oh, what party? No, I love parties. It's thoughtful.
I mean, I had somebody who came out from Big Post to say, are you did you leave the city? I'm like, uh, no.
It's thoughtful, yeah.
He was telling how much he liked the city.
Somebody running suit out of here.
Thanks. I want to thank you all. All righty, we are. Oh, council comments. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I know. Can I ask, there's two other pages in the in the act that I just don't know what they're there for. The notice about towing and hauling practices and the solid waste collection brand out of state.
Oh, uh. Sure. This is uh so I'm on that solid waste thing and this is one of the things that the haulers are dealing with in Rapid County. Is they have companies that are basically encroaching on their franchise and because they're supposed to be the only ones that get garbage out of the city. But you'll have these local haulers or these individual haulers that will come and collect trash. Uh usually it's bulk items. It's like, do you remember the um one eight hundred got junk?
Yeah.
Yeah, so a lot of times those have to be licensed in some way or associated in some way with the franchise. So they just wanted to remind us and these letters are to the rapportals that are basically encroaching on our franchise. I haven't heard that we have that issue here but they are experiencing it in other cities and within.
Um thank you. So I'm on that solid waste community and those meetings.
Yes.
And um what they're finding is these people advertise really cheap rates and then dump them in for.
Oh, yeah. It's not about that part. Yeah, and that's.
They're over the banks and you know, just like you know, just go outside and just private land too, but mostly on on federal course.
Yeah. So all of the haulers are getting together and setting this similar budget and you know, starting to really crack down on it and forcing it because you know, have to clean it up anyway.
Yeah, and I assumed that it was because of the boat sitting out on Highway one.
So just like uh we're we have the state but Casey, when he came back after being gone last week, cause he called the state on them. He's got somebody working with in Lincoln County to get that boat out here, to get on the states. Pushing the state to get rid of it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Oh, free free boat.
Any other public comments?
There is no such thing.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Good night, everybody. So to my point.